Have you seen anyone? I feel all feeling very relaxed after our holiday break and in the best of humour tonight. Right, to open the proceedings, we've got a very special and a very privileged duty really for the special meeting, and I'll just read from my prepared script to make sure I get the wording right. But I'd like to welcome everyone to council this evening to this special meeting in Newcastle City Council, and welcome also to everyone watching online. This meeting is a special meeting and the full business meeting will follow immediately afterwards. The purpose of this special meeting is a very pleasurable one to me, is to consider the following notice of motion. This council in pursuance of the provisions of the Local Government Act 1972, hereby confers the title of Honorary Oldman of the City of Newcastle upon time upon, it says Nicholas Cot, which has always been Nick Cot to me, in recognition of his wonderful eminent service to the council over many, many years as a former member of the council and of course leader of the Liberal Democrat group. So I would invite Nick to stand at the front of the chamber, if you can please, Nick. And I think I'm calling on councillor Lovett to read the citation in relation to Nick.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Nicholas M Cot was first elected to the city council as a representative of the Grange Ward on the 4th of May 2000. From 2004 to 2018, he represented West Gosforth Ward, and from 2018 to 2024, Fordham and West Gosforth Ward. Nick has gone on to serve a total of 24 years as a Newcastle City Councillor. In the Liberal Democrat administration of 2004 to 2011, Nick was executive member for children and young people. During this time, the council achieved beacon status for tackling and preventing child poverty. Turned around children's services after a difficult period, set up the youth council and secured funding for the remodeling or rebuilding of Newcastle Secondary Schools and many primary schools. From 2011 to 2014, Nick was the Chair of the Service Delivery Scrutiny Committee, and from 2012 to 2013, he was a member of the Education Ministerial Advisory Group. Nick was deputy leader of the opposition between 2018 and 20. From 2019 to 2020, he served on the LGA Children and Young People Board. Nick became leader of the opposition during the pandemic period 2020 until 2022. Nick chaired Overview and Scrutiny Coordination Committee from 2020 until he stepped down from the council in 2024. Nick has supported many organisations in his ward, to name but a few. He was a member of the project team that delivered the town square in Gosforth, initiated the formation of the Friends of Gosforth Park, supported the visioning of Gosforth Library and Customer Service Centre, and supported Libidarj to gain the grant for their recent remodeling, and is a worthy recipient of this position. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Lovett. And I think also to second the nomination, we have councillor Kemp. Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Welcome back into the chamber, Nick. I'm glad to second the nomination for Nicholas Cot as honorary alderman. Nick's extensive experience as a councillor has afforded him valuable insight, not only into the complexity and challenges of local government, but also the aspirations of the people who drive our organisation, our residents. I've worked with Nick in his capacity as leader of Newcastle's Liberal Democratic Group, leader of the opposition, Chair of Overview and Scrutiny Coordination Committee, and of course as a colleague in many a debate in this council chamber. I share Nick's long-held priority to address inequalities in our city and to lead action to tackle and prevent child poverty, both even more pertinent today as overarching priorities of the council under our leadership. I would like to thank Nick personally on behalf of the Labour Group and the council for his service to the people of Newcastle in his time at the council, and I would like to reiterate the final sentiment of the citation, that Nick Cot is a worthy recipient of this nomination.
Thank you very much, councillor Kemp. So can I ask now, does council agree with the nomination? The next bit, Chief Executive and I rehearsed briefly before we came in, so I hope we get it right. Yes, can I just say that's a richly deserved honour, Nick. Well done. Many congratulations. Right, we now move on to the formal business of tonight's meeting. We have quite a packed agenda, so I can ask people to try and stick to time constraints where you can, try and keep your comments as concise as possible. So first of all, I'd like to welcome everyone here to the formal business of the council meeting tonight, and also to anybody who's watching online. And the first item on the agenda is any apologies for absence?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. We've had apologies from councillors Anthony, Threw, Hunter, Joan, Lawson, Mafemba, Karen Robinson, Stevenson, Stogall Walker, David Wood, and Mark McCall.
Just wait a second until Nick's and his family have left the chamber and then we can... Do we have any further apologies for absence apart from the ones that have been mentioned so far? Okay, any further apologies for absence? Okay, is that all the apologies? No more? Can we now move on to the minutes of the last meeting? Does councillor agree the minutes of the last meeting held on? Sorry, councillor Lovett? Is this in relation to the minutes?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, Lord Mayor. Thank you. At the last meeting of council, page 3.34, paragraph 2, councillor Williams stated that she would send me the written answer of the timeline when passengers at Gosforth High Street bus stop for the 30, 31, and 35 buses, which has not had a bus shelter for almost eight years. I haven't actually received a response from councillor Williams on that, even though she said she would send it on the evening. Also from Michelle Percy, I think. Michelle Percy had also said that she might send me a response on that, so...
So you're awaiting a response?
I'm waiting. I'm still awaiting a response, yeah.
Okay, your comments have been noted. Thank you, members, councillor Lovett. Thank you. Otherwise, does council agree the minutes of the last meeting, July? We now move on to item three on the agenda, which is official announcements. And the first official announcement, of course, is very sad news about Mark Scrimshaw, who many of us have known over many, many years because of his wonderful support for various committees and the work that he did. So I'll just read out the comments that are here about Mark. Members may be aware that Mark Scrimshaw sadly passed away in July of this year. Mark served the council and the city on a number of different committees. As an independent member and public servant, he will be best remembered for his dedication and commitment as the independent chair of the Standards Committee from 2008 to 2023, and in fact he appeared before council on numerous occasions to give reports and answer questions about the Standards Committee. On behalf of the council, I would like to offer condolences to his wife Jill, his wider family, and all his friends. He will be sadly missed. And as a mark of respect, can I now ask council to stand in the minute's side? Thank you very much. Thank you. The second announcement I'd like to make is in relation to a recent colleague. So on behalf of council, I'd like to pay tribute to former councillor Gerry Keating, who recently resigned as a member of the council. I want to echo the words of the Liberal Democrat opposition leader councillor Colin Ferguson and the leader of council councillor Kemp, and thank Gerry for his huge contribution to public life in Newcastle, stretching back over 40 years. I think we'll all agree that Gerry's anecdotes and his characteristic dry sense of humour will be missed on all sides of the political divide in the council chamber. He will be greatly missed in the council chamber by us all, and I'll also miss Gerry for sharing a few pints of beer at Newcastle Thunder Rugby Club with him on many occasions. So we wish Gerry and his wife Lucy well in the next chapter of their life, and if anybody will be seeing Gerry in the near future, perhaps you can pass on my best wishes as well. So that's Gerry Keating, a wonderful servant to the council over many, many years. Further now... An announcement in relation to Boundary Commission, which I think many of us already know about. We've made various submissions. So can I remind all councils that the Local Government Boundary Commission for England Consultation on Proposed Ward Boundaries is due to close on the 16th of September. Please submit any comments and alternative proposals directly to the commission itself if you haven't already done so. And then in relation to the display outside the council, which we will have seen, just outside the council chamber, ahead of today's motion about fair trade in Newcastle and the start of fair trade fortnight next Monday, now is a good time to celebrate the 21st anniversary of Newcastle upon Tyne becoming the first fair trade city in the UK in 2003. We encourage everyone to support fair trade over the next two weeks and beyond, and it takes me back to remembering about former councillor John Marshall and all the wonderful work he did in relation to fair trade during his time in office on the council. So that's something for us to be aware of. Item four on the agenda is correspondence, and I think we've only received one item of correspondence, which is a letter to the chief executive from the Department for Work and Pension. So does council agree to receive this correspondence? Yep, okay. Item five on the agenda is petitions, and we've received one petition, as I understand. So can I call on councillor Ferguson to present his petition to council, if you would, councillor Ferguson? Thank you. I will also be calling on councillor Story to respond. I don't know if councillor Story wants to make herself ready?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I present this petition on behalf of the families of the wider Gosforth Admissions Catchment area. The full text of the petition is long and heartfelt, and I've been asked to summarise the key points, so I'll refer to the final two paragraphs. We believe there should be transparency and fairness in all aspects of education, including admissions procedures. We urge the relevant authorities to review these practices by Gosforth Multi-Academy Trust and ensure they align with the spirit of equal opportunity as outlined by the Department for Education. We aim to demonstrate that the random allocation method used this year is unfair and demand that this year's process be revisited and overturned so that Gosforth children can go to Gosforth schools.
Councillor Story? Can I just remind you, you have three minutes to respond, councillor Story. Thank you.
Councillor Ferguson, council. Thank you very much for bringing the petition today. I think it's especially poignant when this is the first week back at school, and for many young people, instead of this being a time of excitement, it is a time of anxiety, and absolutely I acknowledge that. I wish that every single family in this city got their first choice of school. I cannot think of many things that are more important than that. However, as I said at the last council meeting, the local authority, as you know, does not set the admissions policy. I'm aware that this petition began on the 16th of March and that the random allocation process used as a tiebreaker in certain situations as part of the admissions process in some schools in Newcastle and in other parts of the country. Gosforth Group, the Multi-Academy Trust, the MAT, set the admissions for Gosforth Academy, sorry, and the Great Park Academy. And this MAT, not the local authority, sets the admissions policy and is legally required to establish a policy which is compliant with the Schools' Admissions Code 2021. As we're aware, there have been a number of complaints, and they are now with the adjudicator, and I wait, and I'm looking forward to getting the results of what that says. So let us wait, let us see, and I sincerely wish that every child and every family were able to have their first choice. And I look forward to a day where we have enough schools and where the local authority can influence schools' admissions policies more. But thank you, councillor Ferguson, for bringing this.
Thank you very much, councillor Story. Does council agree to receive the petition? Read, yes, okay. Item six on the agenda now, we move to public questions and addresses to council. And I have two requests this evening. Can I just remind people that we have five minutes to put the question to council, three minutes for response, and then a follow-up of one minute from the person who's posed the question for any issues that have been raised by the response from council? So can I call on first of all Holly Mildenhall to address council, if you'd like to come to the lectern there? Holly, thanks.
Thank you. I'm speaking today on behalf of the residents of Newcastle. As Palestine enters its 11th month of genocide, thousands of members of the community continue to demonstrate their support for the Palestinians on the streets of Newcastle, yet we still see no representation of this from our local councillors. How can our elective representatives truly represent their constituents when they have not publicly called for a ceasefire? On the 6th of December, three community members asked the council why they were silent about the genocide unfolding in Gaza. At the time of the question, the estimated death toll in Gaza was 17,487. As of the 1st of September, Gaza's Health Ministry estimates the death toll to be 40,738, although leading medical journal estimates it to be 180,000. So will the council publicly condemn Israel's ethnic cleansing of Palestinians? The UK has a responsibility to uphold international law and prevent war crimes from taking place. On the 19th of July 2024, the International Court of Justice declared Israel's occupation of Gaza Strip and the West Bank as unlawful. The ICJ states that Israel's legislation and measures violate the international prohibition on racial segregation and apartheid. Despite the violation of international law, the UK continues to export arms to Israel. Since 2008, the UK has licensed arms worth £576 million to Israel, with 108 new export licences issued since October 7th. As Israel has breached international law, will the council petition the Foreign Secretary to end all UK arms exports to Israel? Given the ICJ's ruling, can the council confirm that it is willing to disclose which companies Newcastle City Council Pension Funds invests in? And will the council divest from any investments that are linked to companies and organisations in occupied territories and therefore breaching international law? Finally, there has been a startling increase in Islamophobia and racism over the past month, evident in Newcastle, Sunderland, and other far-right riots around the country. What will the council do to ensure the safety of local Palestinians, people of colour, and others who are at heightened risk of violence, hate crimes, and racial discrimination in our city?
Thank you very much, Ms Mildenhall. Thank you for that. And I call on councillor Kemp, leader of the council, to respond.
Thank you for bringing your question to council. And I want to make clear that this city council has always called for peace in Gaza and condemned the actions of both the Israeli government and Hamas. I am leader of this council, elected to represent the residents of Newcastle, many of whom are Muslim. We are a diverse city of solidarity and sanctuary, and we are clear about the council's role in working with the city to ensure community cohesion. I've spoken to countless residents who share your anger about what is happening to Palestinian families who have been victims of war crimes in Gaza. Nobody in this chamber will ever condone actions that lead to the murder of children or policy that seeks to wipe towns and cities from a map. As you state, this council has previously passed a motion to condemn the violence that has caused the deaths of innocent Palestinian and Israeli residents. We've always called for peace, and the position of this council is that we back your call for an immediate ceasefire and support the government's decision this week to suspend 30 arms export licences. You will no doubt question whether the Foreign Secretary has gone far enough, and we would certainly support the further suspension of arms identified as being used to commit war crimes. You've asked for details of investment relating to council pension funds. Newcastle City Council are not responsible for this fund. What you refer to as the Tynan Muir Pension Fund, which is independent of this authority and managed by South Tyneside Council. This council is not aware of any investments of the fund that are in breach of international law, and furthermore are assured that every year the corporate governance arrangements of the fund are formally reviewed. These arrangements are documented in the fund's investment strategy statement and its corporate governance and responsible investment policy. Your final point around increases Islamophobia and racism over the past month is pertinent, and I thank you for raising this in this chamber. The government have confirmed they are considering adopting a legal definition of Islamophobia, and I would support that approach. I'm bringing a motion tonight that calls for the city of Newcastle to stand united against violence and hatred. The events of the last month have had a long-lasting impact on many in our community. For some of our residents, our country is not the same as it was a month ago. But what we saw during that disorder across the UK last month is that Newcastle stood proud as a city that would not let those seeking to divide us to win. We know that there were increases in hate crime in the city. The fear and anxiety caused by violence and hatred will not disappear overnight. The confidence of our communities has been damaged, and those wounds will take time to heal. As a local authority, we have the responsibility to bring change in the areas, and we can make the greatest impact. That healing process will only be possible if we listen to partners and to those community members who do so many great things across our city. This is already happening. Last month, ahead of planned protests in the city, I gathered voluntary groups, business people, faith leaders, and councillors of all political colours together at a meeting of this council chamber, joined by our PCC who's here this evening. It was the first meeting of its kind and the start of a new conversation that will help our communities to come together moving forward. We already have plans to reconvene those community leaders in the coming weeks and are taking steps to formally become an anti-racist city. That is something I look forward to bringing back to this chamber in due course. Thank you.
Many thanks, councillor Kemp, for that. And back to Holly. You have a minute now perhaps to comment or respond to some of the remarks that have been made by councillor Kemp.
I appreciate the response. I think it's cleared up a lot of the questions that I asked. I would just like to clarify that though you've said that the people of Newcastle have stood proud, it's the people of Newcastle that have stood proud to defy the far-right, not the councillors, and that is what I am asking, that the councillors stand up, the councillors take these things public. It shouldn't be the public's responsibility to protect our city. The councillors should want to do that.
Thank you, councillor Kemp. Now, the second question, I'm tempted to say an old face, but a previous familiar face. I invite former councillor Peter Allen to address council.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And thank you as well for the comments about Gerry Keating. My question to council is, in the light of the Supreme Court's decision on 2nd July 2024 in Manchester Ship Canal Company versus United Utilities, is the council prepared to consider acting with other landowners along the course of the Ouzbourn to take legal action for damages caused by sewage pollution along the course of the river? Will the council further consider taking similar legal action over other watercourses across Newcastle? over other watercourses across Newcastle?
Councillor Ali?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. This appeal to the Supreme Court forms part of a long-running litigation about discharges of foul water contaminated with untreated sewage into the Manchester Ship Canal. The Supreme Court was asked to decide whether the owner of the beds and banks of the canal, the Manchester Ship Canal Company Limited, could bring a claim in nuisance or trespass when the canal is polluted by discharges of foul water from outfalls maintained by the statutory sewage undertaker. The Environment Agency are responsible for regulating and authorising the discharges made by Northumbria Water into the Ouzbourn. They have teams that are dedicated to this task. This is not a local authority regulatory role. We know that because of the age of the housing stock in Newcastle, that we do have combined foul and surface water systems and that the land along the Ouzbourn has been subject to flooding in the past and releases occur during surge conditions to stop flooding of homes. Council officers are working in conjunction with the Environment Agency, Northumbria Water and Newcastle University on the Blue Green Newcastle Project to mitigate flood risk and improve resilience to flooding in the city through use of blue-green infrastructure. Climate change is increasing the frequency of extreme and disruptive flood events, and we must have plans to cope with these. To deal with these issues in the Ouzbourn, the council has set up the Ouzbourn Way Partnership, following an offer of initial seed funding from the Rees Foundation. The partnership includes the Environment Agency, which has responsibility for main rivers in England, which includes the Ouzbourn, Northumbria Water and North Tyneside Council. The Ouzbourn Way Vision Document sets out proposals to improve the environmental quality in and around the Ouzbourn, improving access and recognising the importance of the river to local communities. Northumbria Water's Drainage and Waste Water Management Plan sets out how the water company intends to tackle storm overflows. The Ouzbourn Way Partnership intends to accelerate improvement measures for storm overflows that contribute to pollution levels in the Ouzbourn. The council recognise the importance of this and will ensure it remains a priority. Alongside this, Northumbria Water's recent Innovation Festival recognised the need for an Ouzbourn Action Group, spearheaded by an independent programme manager. This would provide the scientific context for the Ouzbourn Way Programme Development Manager to work in, with a collaborative monitoring agreement for data capture within the Ouzbourn catchment, and related to this, the creation of a digital platform for data to be democratised to the public through maps, graphs and explanations for what has been found and improved. Recognising the public interest in this issue, an Ouzbourn group of citizen scientists would collect data as identified in the monitoring agreement. It should be recognised that storm overflows are by no means the only contributor to pollution levels, and eradicating them will not on its own bring the water quality up to a level that improves the status of the Ouzbourn. It is equally important to address chemical contributions from agricultural runoff and heavy metals from highway runoff, as well as misconnections into surface water sewers following development. A robust investment plan will need to address all of these pollution sources.
Start and draw it to a close, councillor Ali.
The council own a small amount of land along the Ouzbourn, and to mount a civil action such as the Manchester one would be very costly. There is no budget for mounting such an action. Even if such an action were taken, it would not resolve the issue. And I'll end it just there. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you very much indeed, councillor Ali. All very technical. Actually, Peter, you have a minute to respond.
Okay, thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you for the response. However, I'm afraid it does not address the central issue. Sewage discharges from the thirteen CSOs along the Ouzbourn last year more than doubled. That does not seem to predict that Northumbria Water are taking this matter seriously. Indeed, in their plans so far, all they are talking about is superficial environmental works along the course of the Ouzbourn. There was an American president who once said, "If you want to get things done, speak softly, but we're holding a big stick." The Supreme Court has given us potentially that big stick. And I think it is incumbent on this council and other landowners across the city to look to use that stick to encourage Northumbria Water to take its responsibilities to the environment in this city seriously. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much indeed. Would you like to go to the microphone?
Just off the back of the latest set of comments and the response that we got, I think that under eleven G, I'd like to move a motion that this gets a proper discussion and a proper report the next meeting.
I'll seek some guidance on that if you just give me a few seconds.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. The proposal is to refer the address to somewhere for consideration, but I'm not sure that I heard where it was proposed to refer it to.
I'm not entirely sure I understand the question.
If you're going to refer the matter under standing order eleven to another committee for consideration, you have to...
Start under eleven G, just to move a motion that we get a proper response.
To Cabinet.
To Cabinet.
Okay, so as I understand it, the proposal is that this issue is referred to Cabinet. Sorry. Sorry, the standard order is to refer the matter to a committee or Cabinet for consideration. So...
That will be the case. Okay, thank you.
So as I understand it, it's been moved and seconded, and therefore requires a vote.
It requires a vote about referring it to Cabinet.
Yeah, to Cabinet.
Okay, that case. So the vote is whether this issue should be referred to Cabinet following the presentation by Mr Allen.
I suspect we need to use the...
I suspect we need to go to a vote. Yes, all right. Yeah, so we're setting up the go vote. Bearing in mind that the go vote doesn't encompass everyone. If we can do the electronic voting first and then hands can be raised as usual. Anyone not, anyone struggling to... Where the go vote? Councillor Taylor?
Yes.
Yours is a yes? Any others? Councillor Wright?
No.
Councillor Shatwell?
No.
Councillor Cairns?
No.
Don't see any of the hands raised. Don't see any. All right, see?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I've got another vote, haven't I? Councillor Lovett? Councillor Hoddart? Councillor Burns? Any others? We'll have to get the go vote working a bit more efficiently, I think, if you... Any others we've missed? Okay, so the motion is that this matter should be referred to Cabinet, and the votes have just disappeared off my screen, so if you can refresh my screen again. And the vote is twenty-one votes for yes and thirty-two votes against. So that's... I'm just going to...
But it's still majority, not too...
Okay, right, okay, okay. It's a mixture of technology and non-technology. So I'm told now there's twenty-five votes yes and thirty-two votes no. So therefore, the request is turned down. Okay? So thirty-four votes against. Yeah, thirty-four votes against and twenty-five yes. Is there any way we can actually get all the votes on? All right, okay. Yeah, so twenty-five votes against and thirty-four... Sorry. Thirty-four votes against and twenty-five votes in favour. So we have the request. Okay, we'll move on to item seven on the agenda now, which I think is a very appropriate item because of the challenging time that the police have had, both locally and nationally, over the last few months. We've got a hand going up here as well. Would you like to go to the microphone? Oh, well, congratulations. Yeah, I was just about to say that I think it's very appropriate because we know the police are going through a very challenging time at the moment and having to deal with some difficult situations. So I'm delighted to invite, I suppose, recently-elected Police and Crime Commissioner, Susan Dunworth, and the Chief Constable, Vanessa Jardine, to address council this evening. If you can address council for about ten minutes, a bit of flexibility, and then we can invite questions. And we've allocated between twenty-five and thirty minutes for this slot anyway this evening. Okay, over to you.
Ten minutes each?
No, ten minutes shared, I'm afraid, because it's only a twenty-five-minute slot.
I'm joking. Thank you. It's a pleasure to be joining me here tonight. There's lots of familiar faces in this room, obviously, and it's great to be here with you again. And for those of you who haven't met before, I look forward to working with you as your new Police and Crime Commissioner. I apologise for my voice, which has suddenly become really croaky. And I'm hoping my holiday next week is going to sort that out. So my election campaign, for anybody who missed it, was centred around my commitment to create safer streets and therefore stronger communities. Because like I know is the vision of Newcastle Council, I don't believe you can have communities that thrive and individuals who reach their full potential if they are not safe and if they don't feel safe in their homes, in their businesses, at school, on public transport. So that's really from where I started. And I'm sure when you hear from the Chief Constable in a minute, you will understand that there isn't a great deal of difference, if any, in terms of what we're trying to achieve. So I have only, I've not been in this post four months. Some mornings, it feels like I've been in it four years. And other times, when yet something new is thrown at me, it feels like I've been in it four minutes. So it really has been a bit of a rollercoaster. First of all, we got a general election, which actually slowed down a lot of the work that my office could do around preparing the Police and Crime Plan. But out of that, I have to say, obviously, I'm a Labour Police and Crime Commissioner. I am delighted to be starting my term of office with the newly-elected Labour Government as well. And I seriously think that the Labour Party nationally stole some of the ideas from Northumbria Police and from the Police and Crime Commissioners' office in Northumbria when they set around their manifesto. Because like myself, they're wanting to halve serious and violent crime. They want to finally tackle the scourge of armed violence against women and girls that affects every part of our communities. They recognise, as we recognise, the misery that antisocial behaviour causes, whether that's motorbikes, whether that's vandalism and graffiti, whether it's big gangs of people in a park being very loud and intimidating. All those things affect people's quality of life and are really important. So the Sunday after the general election, the Home Secretary met with the Police and Crime Commissioners and reaffirmed her number-one priority, which was about increasing confidence in policing, public confidence in policing. And again, that is exactly the same as is mine. We cannot police unless we do it by consent. And in order to be effective in policing, we have to have the trust and confidence of our communities. So that brings me on to the second bit of my new job that wasn't expected, and that was the civil unrest, disturbances, rioting, gangs of junk and thugs rampaging through our streets across the country, not just here. And in some ways, we were fortunate in Northumbria that we only actually had that manifestation of such hatred on the streets in Sunderland, and we were able to respond to that effectively, quickly. And with our community, with our criminal justice partners, I think brought that to quite a rapid, rapid halt. I must pay credit to Newcastle City Council, and in particular to councillor Nick Kemp for facilitating a meeting in... Was it in this room? It was in this room. In this actual chamber, which did bring together not just the police and the local authorities and the other blue light services, but it brought together community leaders, people involved in voluntary and community sector work within our city. And we were able, I think, to offer some reassurance to businesses, to residents, to community groups, that we were able to keep them safe. And although I know there was some disruption to the city centre on that weekend, it was very minimal. And the recovery of confidence in Newcastle has been quicker than it has been in some other areas. But that wasn't just about policing. The police force were the frontline. But actually, without that partnership, working with anyone, working with Newcastle City Council, the fire brigade, we wouldn't have got to where we got to. And the chief constantly tells me when I thank him for doing something, it's a team, and it is a team if we're talking about tackling crime. For me, the thing that came out of that horrible, horrible week was the impact that it had on communities, on individuals and communities. And as we all know, those communities of colour were disproportionately affected, not just by the violence, but by the fear of that violence as well. And we cannot put that genie back in the bottle, is my view, that we need to go forward and we need to make sure we are tackling racism, we are tackling intolerance within our communities. And what we've done as a Police and Crime Commissioner is put in some packages around our victim's support work. But the other thing that we saw was actually we saw the worst of our region on the streets on that Friday night. But on the Wednesday and the Saturday, we saw the best of our region as well. And that's what we need to keep hold of and move forward. So the only other thing I really want to talk about finally is obviously my Police and Crime Panel is out of consultation at the moment. I think the consultation might have closed. I say, looking at Ruth, it has closed. However, having said that, if somebody wanted to put something in tonight, I'm sure he would take it. But that hasn't just been about that consultation with the community through the questionnaire. I've been doing a series of round-table events with individuals, with businesses, with communities to look at things like rural crime, retail crime, violence against women and girls. So we hope to have that, well, we will have that planned to go to the Police and Crime Panel in December. Hopefully, it'll be signed off by the panel and we can launch it with the new year. So I just want to finish by thanking all you as councillors. Some of you have been in touch with me recently about things, others I'm sure will do in the past. We need to communicate. We need to work together. We can't police our way out of crime. We have to work as a partnership to have fewer victims and less crimes. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Commissioner. I'm very conscious of the ticking clock in the corner. No, 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 it's absolutely fine. Lord Mayor, thank you for inviting me back to address members of the council. I was here last year and committed to coming back every year, so I'm delighted to be here again. I will keep this brief because I think there's a lot of value in answering those questions. When I came last year as your relatively new Chief Constable, I set out some of the things that I wanted to do. And I just want very briefly to tell you now about some of the things that we have done in Northumbria Police. So the first thing really was to create a strategy. And my colleagues told me in the force to keep it simple. And I kept it very simple to three key headlines. And I'll mention those now because underneath those is the delivery of some of the things that we have done and we are trying to do within the force. So the first one was be there when you need us. Very simple. We need to be there when the public need us to be there. And we've done a number of different things in relation to that. One of the things that you'll be very aware of is that we've created six area commands now that reflect our local authority boundaries. And we've strengthened leadership teams to those areas to give a real focus and a real community focus to the six. And we are seeing some real improved performance in those six areas. And we are seeing some real improved performance i- in those six areas, from our response times that are improving week on week, uh, right the way through to our criminal justice outcomes, um, which again, literally week on week are improving. Uh, we are now, uh, on a par with our most similar force areas, uh, and we are, uh, in fact, improving on that, uh, and reaching into some of the higher, higher levels that we see in other forces, um, across the country, which, which is a real plus for us. We're also answering our calls in a much more efficient and effective way. Um, we have government targets that are set for answering our 999 calls, which is to answer 90% within 10 seconds, and we are now, uh, reaching that on a very consistent basis. We've listened to the community, the community tells us that they want more of our police stations open, and that's what we've done, uh, and we continue to open more week on week, uh, so that the public, um, have access, uh, to officers if they wish to do so, uh, and we've opened the front doors of many of our police stations and will continue to do that. The second focus of our, um, strategy is to deliver an outstanding service. Um, and I want to just talk very, very quick, briefly, um, uh, on what the Commissioners just spoke about there, about the recent disorder. Because, um, we had some of that experience here, but actually, the response of the communities, the response of the greater partnership was absolutely phenomenal and made me extremely proud. I know that the North East is a great place to live and work, uh, and actually, we saw that, uh, in a demonstrable way, uh, with the reaction of our communities and our partnership when we came together to tackle what was a, a significant issue. And whilst here in Newcastle, we didn't see the disorder that we saw in, in Sunderland, what we did see was, uh, was people coming out onto the streets with the intent of causing disorder, but we saw our communities come together, we worked together, uh, and we reacted to that. And actually, uh, the response that I saw from the communities was really heartfelt. Uh, we couldn't have done it alone, policing couldn't have done it alone, and we did it together. The final area, and I'll be very brief, um, is around prevention, and that's our focus as we move forward, because actually, we need to prevent crime from happening in the first place, and we need to prevent, uh, the activity that happens on our streets, and we can only do that again together. I think devolution gives us a huge opportunity, and I'm very, very keen that policing is at the forefront of public sector reform, uh, as we move forward, uh, into the next 12 months. And I'd like to be able to stand here in the next 12 months and tell you about the results of that, um, again, because I think there's a massive opportunity for the North East to respond i- in a way that we haven't seen across the country with true public sector reform. Lord Mayor, I'll finish there, I'm sorry, it got slightly over. I'm sorry about that, um, but I'm happy to answer.
No, I think that, I mean, policing obviously is a very important issue, so I am a little bit flexible on, on time. I do realise, though, we have a lot of business here this evening. Um, I've got a whole list of people, unsurprisingly, who want to ask questions, so I can't take our hands going up on the floor until I've actually worked through the list. I think the way we'll do it is I'll take, if I, I'll take three questions at a time, you can respond to those, and then we'll see how the time goes, okay? So the first one I'll call is councillor Kemp, to be followed by councillor Ashby. So if you wanted to, prepare yourselves for that.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner and Chief Constable, for your presentations and for your continued hard work in keeping Newcastle safe. Tonight's meeting of City Council rightly focuses on multiple points of how the council and its partners work together to prevent the kinds of violence, hatred and hostility that we've witnessed across the country in recent weeks, and I brought a motion to tonight's meeting on just this issue. Our strong partnership's working has proved vital in moving at speed and with precision to deal with complex and fast-moving threats, and in enabling our city partners to join and speak with one voice about what our city stands for. The example, as rightly said by Susan earlier, was in this chamber a few weeks ago. So please, can you tell me how you see the importance of partnership working both with the council and with other anchor and city partners changing in the coming year in the light of the valuable momentum we've built? Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Ashby.
Uh, can I add my-
Can I just say councillor Ashby to be followed by councillor Hartley? If councillor Hartley wants to prepare for the next question.
Uh, can I add my thanks, Commissioner and Chief Constable, for your presentations? Uh, thank you to Northumbria Police for keeping us safe during the recent nationwide disturbances, and thank you in particular to two community constables I spoke to who were a visible presence on the West Road on their rest days, and it's them and their colleagues I'd like to ask you about. How much beyond the normal, uh, work week are police like them working, and what are you doing to ensure their mental as well as physical wellbeing?
Thank you councillor Ashby, councillor Hartley.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you, thank you, Commissioner and Chief Constable. This last month has shown the power of community resilience, and I've seen firsthand the great work that the Empowering People in Communities team are doing in my ward of Biker. My question for you both, do you think we need more of a community policing approach that's focused on creating safe social environments and on, on encouraging residents to participate with our police institutions to keep our community safe? And if so, what do you think would need to happen to strengthen a community policing approach in Newcastle?
Okay, can I ask for a response to those, those three questions?
Yep, yep. Thank, thank you for the questions. Um, just in relation to partnerships, first of all, um, I, I think we've seen the best of partnership working i- in the last few weeks, um, and that's, um, i- is evident by, by all the, uh, the activity and the positivity that has come. We are all focused, I know, on, on keeping our communities safe, and, and in my view, the only way we can do that is in partnership. Yes, the police have a, a very specific role, we have specific powers, um, but we absolutely need the partners, um, and your partnership working to help us do that. Um, Northumbria Police last year invested 134 extra officers into neighbourhood policing from the uplift, um, the, the additional officers that we recruited. Um, we know that we still haven't got the same numbers in policing that we had in 2010 before austerity hit here in Northumbria Police, but we have had an uplift in the last few years. Uh, and my absolute focus is on neighbourhood policing and improving neighbourhood policing, and that's why the additional 134 officers, uh, went into specifically our, our neighbourhoods. Uh, and it's the intention of those officers to maintain those links with the local community, but also work to work with, uh, local councils, the local authority and all the other, uh, number of, of, of critical partners that we have. I think we've had a real lift from what's happened over the last few weeks, much as, as, as that we would never want to see that, and I think those partnerships have just been strengthened and will continue to strengthen from that. Um, thank you for the question regarding, uh, the working week. Um, you, you, many of you will know that we had to cancel a number of officers' rest days, and some officers didn't actually get a day off for over three weeks because of the, the, the way that we needed to put extra people, um, onto the streets. Um, not one single officer complained, I've been out this morning to our, uh, our response base over at Wickham, talking to officers, um, and not a single one has complained to me or to, 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 to any of their colleagues about the demands that we placed upon them over the, the past few weeks. Um, it's absolutely right to ask about their mental and physical, um, wellbeing, um, and we have a very strong, uh, response in force to wellbeing with our occupational health services for people who, who need that, uh, but also for their, for their mental wellbeing as well, uh, and we make sure that officers get and staff, because it's very important for our PCSOs as well, get the support that they need, that they need. Um, they do work incredibly hard, they work incredibly long hours, uh, but there is nothing more important than their mental and physical wellbeing, so please, if, if I can reassure you that, that's very much a focus of, of mine to ensure they are okay. Um, in, in relation to the community policing and residents participating in that, um, we do have a number of volunteering schemes, uh, you'll be, you'll be well versed, I'm sure, uh, with the Special Constabulary, um, who do some, uh, some amazing work. Um, it never ceases to amaze me, the people that hold down full-time jobs and then come out on a Friday and Saturday evening and help us police the streets of, of Newcastle in particular. Um, after doing that, we have, um, lots of, um, we have, um, Northumbria Connected, uh, which is another way that we try and maintain the relationships, um, with the community. Um, but, but I think that, um, the, the eyes and the ears of our residents are, are the most important thing. Um, it's the, it's the public that tells us things, it's the public that, that, that responds to what's happening on the streets and give us the information that, so that we can respond appropriately. Um, and I am very committed to improving those relationships. Uh, in fact, I had a meeting just a couple of weeks ago about our Special Constabulary, uh, because we need to improve our numbers and increase our numbers, uh, with our Special Constabulary. Uh, we also have a number of volunteering, um, schemes, we have volunteers that work within the force, um, and, and I think that's a really important part of what we do. Uh, neighbourhood policing aims to bring the communities closer, um, to, uh, uh, to, to residents and to our communities, uh, and you have my absolute commitment that, that we are focused upon that and are committed to, to maintaining and improving it.
Okay, shall I move on to our next magic? Just very briefly then, if you could, dear sister.
If I could, just, Lord Mayor. Um, so one of the things that the Police and Crime Commissioners' office has done is increase the capacity within the Violence Reduction Unit, so that we've produced, um, an additional package of work that is particularly around challenging racism and challenging unacceptable behaviours and, and, and attitudes. Um, because as I said before, my view is we can't put this genie back in the bottle without actually dealing with it. So that's designed predominantly for children between nine and 18 years old, and it'll look at things like understanding of law, understanding law around protests, what is violent disorder, um, and what is common endeavour as well, because a lot of young people, as we know, often get involved on the fringes of that. Um, we won't just, that, that's being made available to schools, um, for them to deliver themselves, or for those schools that we're already working with, where staff can go in and do that as well. Um, we're also have offered it to, um, community and youth groups, and already North East Youth and Street Rides have taken us up on that. Um, the other issue for me, if you'll just, um, allow me, Lord Mayor, is not just about tackling that, but it's about recognising the levels of, um, suspicion and concern that are still in those communities, and lots of children went back to school this week, who have really had the most pile of summer holidays, um, and actually, we need to reassure them, and we need to do some of that good old-fashioned work around community cohesion and understanding. Um, and my final point is around that neighbourhood policing. You know, we're not going to get those police officers back on the beat that people remember from the 1950s, but working with the Chief Constable, um, and the force, they look at other areas, ways of doing that as well. So in Newcastle, you've got the City Safe Project, which is working with businesses, with the City Council, actually been embedded in the city, and there are other places in the region where we have co-terminus offices with local authorities, health, youth services, youth justice. We're looking, or certainly I'm looking, I'm not going to surprise you, Chief Constable, but, but those ideas as a way, because it's about visibility, it's not necessarily about patrols.
Thank you very much, Susan. Um, time is our enemy a little bit, but I'll take three more questions across the chamber and then see how it goes. So the three questions across the chamber are from councillor Kilgawa, councillor Lovett and councillor Ramon, so if you could prepare yourselves, I think councillor Ramon is also... So councillor Kilgawa, first of all.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Um, can I echo the leaders' comments and thank you both for your leadership and for the swift action we saw from Northumbria Police during the recent unrest? My question relates to the frightening rise in misogyny and violence against women and girls that we've seen over recent months and years. I was pleased to see the Home Secretary, Yvette Cooper, acknowledge this as a national emergency, and the new Labour Government commit to halving incidents of violence against women and girls. So could you both please tell us how the Office of Police and Crime Commissioner and Northumbria Police will play their part in achieving this reduction, and how Newcastle City Council can support you in this vi- in this vital work?
Thank you. Councillor Lovett?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Many residents are experiencing issues of antisocial behaviour which may be linked to crime along the western corridor of Newcastle between Leamington and Fawdon from the electric bikes and scooters, and it's not just the odd bike, it's several at a time. Within the last month in Fawdon, we were provided with one day's drone funding to focus on the specific antisocial behaviour issue which we were very grateful for. We've had significant support from Northumbria Police, Community Neighbourhood and the epic teams to prevent, um, we are in the process of fitting barriers to prevent serious injury to pedestrians in a high-volume nip point in Fawdon, and residents are consistently feeding reports through to Northumbria Police, which include burned-out bikes in Kenton and numerous events in Fawdon. What is Northumbria's police plan to deal with antisocial behaviour due to these electric bikes and scooters?
Okay, let councillor Lovett, councillor Ramon.
Thank you, uh, Lord Mayor. Can I, uh, for the record, express, um, our thanks to, uh, Northumbria Police, uh, certainly the way they have, um, handled, uh, what was a, a very tough, uh, situation for us here. Um, it was, uh, 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 it, it was a show of solidarity that Newcastle did come together, um, at the demonstration where my ward colleague councillor Musharaf spoke, and it was fantastic to see, uh, a number of councillors, including, uh, the deputy, uh, Lord Mayor who was there. I'd like to, uh, bit before your time, uh, Chief Constable, uh, some 33 years, um, ago, we saw the, uh, riot of the Medway, which then moved into parts of, uh, the west end, and on the 31st of August 1992, exactly 32 years ago, uh, which led, um, in my ward in Elzeck, um, on the way to, uh, the city's mosque, uh, a gentleman, uh, named Huazmia was set up on. Um, two weeks later, he died because of the injuries that he was sustained, it was a racist murder. Now, uh, there's a vital lesson to be learnt, and I'm not going to ask the Chief Constable because it predates your time, I hope, uh, Northumbria Police have learnt, uh, a, a, a huge lesson on the history to avoid any, uh, repeat, because the fear among the Muslim community and the black community is there, and it re, uh, brought back the memories of 33 years ago, so I really hope lesson has been learnt. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Ramon, so if you'd like to address those three questions.
Uh, thank you. Um, I, I'll, I'll address the, the e-bikes, Lord Mayor, and the Commissioner will, will answer the broad question. Um, so we take, um, the issue of e-bikes and scooters very, very seriously. Uh, I recognise the, uh, the distress and the upsetting causes and, and the extreme antisocial behaviour, um, that, that, that follows as a result of it, a- and they're also really dangerous a- as well. Um, uh, we've got Operation Capio, um, within the force, this is a dedicated, uh, unit that's been set up, uh, they work with the drones and we've just, uh, the, the, mentioned the drones, um, but also, um, what Capio is doing is, is looking across the force, um, at where these incidents are happening. Um, every single person who rings Northumbria Police to raise an issue regarding e-bikes or e-scooters gets a, a phone call back from the force, so we can fully understand the issue, uh, fully understand what's going on and, and make sure that we target the activity in the right areas. And in the last three months, we've seized over a hundred of these e-bikes, uh, from people, uh, using them, uh, to facilitate antisocial behaviour, um, and as I say, set up a dedicated team, so we are absolutely committed to this. We are hoping within the next sort of 12, 18 months that there'll be some technological advances that help us, um, tackle these, these bikes. Uh, it's not coming as quick as I would have liked, this is a national programme, uh, to, to help us tackle them, but, but it will be coming eventually. Uh, but just to reassure you, we have got dedicated resources, uh, we have seen, um, a decrease in some of the offending, um, and we are using a targeted approach with a number of different tactics, uh, with a number of different units, uh, across the force in order to deal with it, but I absolutely recognise the problem.
Um, yes, I'll just address the, the issue of violence against women and girls and, and misogyny, um, and I welcome the Home Secretary's, um, announcement that, I think it says they're going to look at how they can incorporate it at this stage, but hopefully they speak to some of the experts in the field, and I'm sure there's people in this room who, who can share, share information with them. Um, the Police and Crime Commissioner's office, um, and I am very fortunate that I've followed two really strong female Police and Crime Commissioners, um, they have always prioritised violence against women and girls and working with victims and supporting victims, but at the same time challenging those behaviours that lead to it. Um, you might remember the All Add Up campaign that was run last year, it was on social media, but I think it was also, um, on, on some buses and things, and that's about, a bit like racism, it's about that challenging, it's the odd comment- it's about that challenging, it's the odd comment about women, about girls and understanding how that makes them feel. We still run the active bystander training, which is what it says on the tin, enabling people, giving people the tools and the confidence to actually challenge misogyny and violence towards women and girls. And I'm pleased to say, so there's already been three hundred and ten people who've taken advantage of that and Newcastle City Council, I believe, are now one of our providers for that because it needs to cascade really. It is fair to say that misogyny is actually, raw misogyny, I think's quite new in the field in terms of people having packages and how to work with it. I am well aware that schools do work on it and Ofsted has raised it as an issue and again, that work that we do with schools just about tackling unacceptable behaviour in our communities will continue. We also do some things called Team Talk which is facilitated by Beyond Equality and they run workshops with students in colleges and universities across the city, again, just making particularly men and young men think about their behaviours, think about the things they say and do and what impact that might have on their female colleagues.
Councillor Rawlins' question? We address that?
So I think it was more for you but I've actually... So what we're doing, so I think we're a long way from those last riots disturbances that we had in Newcastle. I think Northumbria Police, and I wasn't part of it then and I'm only just part of it now, so how much I can take credit for is questionable, but it is a different beast, totally and utterly, and my abhorrence at those behaviours that we were absolutely mirrored in every single police officer I met with or spoke to. Their commitment to absolutely challenge and not accept that is truly commendable but it is only by working together and what, and I sort of tried to touch on that before, for me, one of, if you can have a positive arriving out of such horrendous experiences, it is that keeping going those conversations between the leaders of the mosques, the people involved in the community groups, in the voluntary sector, individual residents, to keep those channels of communication open, to be clear and honest and transparent with people. The police's job is to serve and to protect, my job is to make sure they do that, but neither of us can do it without the feedback from yourselves and it is about working together, it is about trust. And I think Newcastle is a very different city to what it was when you were talking... I was in this area then and I think Newcastle is a very different city with a very different population now.
Sadly, time is against us, I'm conscious that there's quite a few other people wanting to ask questions but unfortunately we won't be able to get round to that, but I'm sure that if you address your questions or concerns directly to the Police Commissioner or the Chief Constable, you would get a response to that. So I just wanted to sort of finish by saying that, not just to thank Susan and Vanessa for their presentation this evening and for the way that they very helpfully answered our questions, but for all the tremendous work that Northumbria Police have done, not just in the last few months but in the last few years to make Newcastle the safe city it is today and I'd like it to show our appreciation. Thank you.
If I may ensure that your officers have the complete details for my office and any questions, go down ahead and follow this on.
Okay, excellent. Thanks very much indeed, thank you. We now move on to itemate on the agenda which is the, something very dear to my heart, the Youth Justice Plan and I will call on councillor Storey to move the report in relation to our wonderful work in relation to youth justice. And I understand councillor Kilgore is going to second the report?
Thank you. I'm really pleased to bring today the annual report of the Youth Justice Service which sets out the strategy for Newcastle in relation to our youth justice partnerships. The service is ambitious, it's collaborative and importantly, it's child-led and the focus for the twenty-four, twenty-five plan is to continue to work with children and the theme is nothing about me without me and that will continue to be the ambition of the partnership. Every child who enters into the Youth Justice Service and system has been collectively failed by adults. It's a failure of society and we as adults need to take responsibility for this. Children and young people by nature are creative, they're kind, they're inquisitive, they're full of joy and energy and for children entering into the youth justice system, somewhere, somehow, this joy has been interrupted and stifled. We see so many children and their parents whose lives have become devastated because they didn't get the right support at the right time and prevention has to be our key focus and we will continue to relentlessly focus on this. Fourteen years of enforced austerity have decimated our public services, child poverty has reached epidemic proportions and the cost of living crisis continues to have a detrimental impact on families. Huge gaps have grown up, have grown in many services and vulnerable children are falling through those gaps in education, the care system and significantly in our mental health The other sinister context that our teenagers live under is a looming presence of adults seeking to exploit them, organised criminals prey on children and young people, offering and they offer alternatives to them that sometimes seem a way out. Sorry, I've lost my train of thought there. They groom and befriend young people, they offer them food, phones, money, friendship and they groom children to groom other children. And we've just heard about the under-resourced police forces in the country and that is what we're grappling with. We have to work in partnership to reclaim lost ground, we have to have a presence in communities and we have to reclaim areas and reach out to young people who are marginalised and that is some of the issues that our Youth Justice Service is working with right now. That being said, we've had some key successes in the last year and those are clearly outlined in the plan. We've continued strong use of Outcome Twenty-Two which is deferred prosecution for young people and that provides opportunities to work with young people without the stigma of being considered a first-time entrant into the youth justice system, thereby reducing the number of first-time entrants, that is critical. We've rolled out the Focus Deterrent Programme, there's been a reduction in the re-offending rates and twenty per cent reduction in recorded offences for young people overall and a reduction in the use of custody for young people. We've introduced successful initiatives such as music therapy and, you know, you might be thinking, well, why, why music therapy? Because it's critical and because young people are creative beings and they have every right to have access to music, to art, to culture, all of those things and it is a really powerful way of detracting from criminal behaviour. We've developed a diversity policy and there's quite a lot in the report about diversity issues and we've supported young people to engage with our Future Focused Trauma Informed Service. Areas to consider going forward, we will need to respond to the increased gravity of offending in young people and we can't shy away from that. We need to respond to serious youth violence in partnership with our Violent Crime Reduction Unit and the police and we need to continue to focus on prevention. We have had a focus on embedding our turnaround and focus deterrents for young people who are at risk of entering the criminal justice system for the first time and we've been working with key partners including schools, early help, the police and to focus on getting the right young people at the right time, the right support. Our priorities will continue to be developing links with our new residential care homes and improving restorative practice with our children in care, developing our offer for victims of crime in line with the revised Victims Code and this is really, really important because although I've very much focused on children and young people in their own right as children, we also have to remember that a lot of the harm children cause is actually to other children. It is often children who are causing significant fear, trauma and harm, sexual abuse of other young people, very, very serious violence and so it's absolutely critical that we also get the support right for victims and that's something that we are focusing on.
Let's draw it to a conclusion. Councillor Storey?
You know me, I've always got more to say and never ever get it quite right. I am going to end there but I'd really like to end on thanking the staff. We have exceptional, passionate, wonderful staff and as we've heard about, police officers going over and above, our staff in the youth justice system and in children's social care go over and above every single day and some of the things that they hear are absolutely heartbreaking and I just want to give a huge amount of thanks to them and for this plan. Thank you.
Let's go on to councillor Kilgore is seconding but I don't know whether he wanted to speak.
I'll be seconded.
Can I call on, if I look at my questions, councillor Ferguson to be followed by councillor Cairns?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I've seen this report a number of times in a number of different forums. The thing I'm particularly interested in is the use of the Outcome Twenty-Two deferred prosecutions, which I think in broad terms is welcome, but I'm glad that you mentioned prevention as well because it strikes me that the point at which an Outcome Twenty-Two needs to be used, an issue has already occurred in which a prosecution could have been considered. So I wondered if you could talk some more about what can be done on the prevention side of the equation so that over time we can see a reduction in Outcome Twenty-Two's as well. Thank you.
Councillor Storey, I wonder if I can take the questions in pairs so I'll invite councillor Cairns to pose her question as well and then maybe you can address it.
Yes, that's fine. Thank you, Lord Mayor. Just want to thank councillor Storey for the report and to reiterate her thanks to staff for the work that they do to deliver the service. My question's quite straightforward, could you tell us, really I'd like to know more about the Future Focus Trauma Informed Service and how it operates? Thank you.
Councillor Storey?
Yes, I'm just writing that down. I'm really sorry, it does take us a little bit of time to kind of process the information. Councillor Ferguson, your question about prevention, you will know in the report that we are doing a huge amount, where entire emphasis is on trying to prevent children and young people from entering the system and then deferring them from custody and that's absolutely crucial. We are doing a great deal but we would like to do more and I think one of the things that the plan really does outline is that we'd have to work harder and faster together on that prevention to stop young people from coming into custody. I'm happy to get you more detailed information about that. And the next question was from councillor Cairns which is about trauma-informed practice. I've already said that children and young people coming into the criminal justice system, they've already been failed and I think trauma-informed practice, trauma-informed care and the Future Focus work really recognises that. It's about understanding that we need to change our systems and recognising that many young people who are on the edges of becoming involved in the criminal justice system have had significant experience of trauma, they've grown up in homes where they've possibly experienced ACEs, abuse, neglect, domestic abuse, sexual abuse and it's about, it's not making excuses for offending but it's about recognising that those kind of co-existing factors are really very relevant and that children and young people need support, need treatment and need trauma care. One of the critical things as well about having the trauma-informed practice is that it also supports staff as well, so there is a specialist working in the, working in the youth justice team, a psychologist, a senior practitioner, he was doing reflexive practice as well with the staff because going back to what I said before, a lot of those staff are hearing some of the worst things that could possibly happen to a human being and they're hearing it day in, day out and so we need to support them as well. So, and I think as well it's about recognising, not just what have you done but what has happened to you to get you into this situation, so that's part of the trauma-informed care.
I've got three further speakers on this report, councillor Barnett, councillor Maynes. Would like to go to...
Lord Mayor, councillor Storey, if you have any final questions as well.
And the final one is councillor Walker.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you, Lord Mayor. I want to start by thanking councillor Storey for her hard work on this topic and she's very passionate about youth justice and making sure that all young people get the support they need and I'd also like to repeat the thanks to all the hardworking staff that work in this sector, it's a very difficult area but they do such tremendous work. I wanted to ask councillor Storey about why Newcastle continues to have relatively low rates of serious violent crime in comparison to other similar cities. According to report, we're the third lowest in our youth justice family, so yes, would ask councillor Storey to answer that question.
I don't know if councillor Walker would like to speak as well, then I can ask councillor Storey to wind up with the final comment.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd just like to also express my thanks to councillor Storey for bringing this report tonight and to the team who put it all together and the work that they do, I think it is a tremendous piece of work and I look forward to watching it develop further. My question's a very quick one. A small number of children and young people are responsible for disproportionate levels of crime, what interventions are we putting in place for this?
Councillor Storey?
Thank you, councillor Barnett. Thank you for your question. I feel very, very proud of the fact that we continue to have relatively low levels of serious violence. I think it's really, again, just following on from the Police and Crime Commissioner's presentation, I think what's really apparent about Newcastle is we have absolutely outstanding partnerships. We believe in working relationally, we believe that developing those relationships between multi-agency partners is absolutely crucial and we work together with good relationships as adults. The culture that supports this kind of delivery of service is exemplar and that continues, you know, to be the case. We focused on a public health approach to serious violence, we very much focused on working with children as children and not stigmatising them and, you know, making them feel, getting the right support for them I suppose really is what I'm trying to say there. We're ambitious and we never rest on our laurels and I think, again, I just want to think about the amazing, skilled, qualified, experienced staff who go over and above every single day. We're a city of sanctuary, we're warm, we're welcoming and again, I think that was just, I was so proud of our city over the last few weeks when we saw violence, serious violence breaking out in other communities who have very similar issues to Newcastle, child poverty, deprivation, all of those things, it did not transpire in the same way here. And I think there's a reason for that and I think it's because of all of those things that I've just described. Our communities stand together and they stand by children and young people as well and they stand by children and young people who are, you know, on the fringes of criminal behaviour. But we cannot be complacent and we have to keep on horizon scanning and we have to keep on using evidence and we do see that levels of serious and violent crime are rising and so we must not be complacent but I'm absolutely exceptionally proud of where we are and where we have been for a long time in terms of not descending into that really high levels of serious violence. Councillor Walker asked me about a small and significant number of children and young people who are, I suppose, responsible for a disproportionate amount of crime and what we're doing about this. I think the first thing that I would like to say there is it is a small number of children and young people and you're right to point that out because overwhelmingly, if you And you're right to point that out because overwhelmingly, if you flip that round on its head, overwhelmingly, our children and young people are not involved in crime and antisocial behaviour. And this shouldn't be stigmatized and associated with criminal behaviours. Newcastle as a city has got low rates of serious violence, as I've already said, well below the national averages, well below our kind of sister cities. And that's because we have a strong focus on reducing violent crime and preventing crime. In the report, it outlines a focus deterrent work where we do see young people who are repeatedly involved in crime. And that work seeks to identify those children who are most at risk and pose the greatest threat to their communities. And this approach clearly kind of outlines to children and young people what the consequences are of becoming involved in crime and violence. It sets out to them that that kind of pathway that they're on. And it then puts in specialist target interventions in place. And critically, I think those targeted pathways also seek to engage, to work with the community, to work with their families, to work with friends. It takes a village to raise a child, as you know, and it also takes a village to, you know, to make sure that children and young people have another path to go on. We've got to offer them something better. And I'm really looking forward to the next few years, having a Labour government and having more to offer children and young people. So we see an even greater reduction in violent crime. Thank you.
I know it's difficult to capture your passion in three or five minutes. Thank you very much for that. Thank you. Does councillor agree to receive the report? Sorry, I've got the wording wrong. Does councillor approve the youth justice plan? I'm told that we're here to approve rather than agree. Okay. We now move on to item nine on the agenda, which is questions by members. And we have one question is shown on the, in the council papers. Question is as shown there for an oral reply. The question's from councillor Stone, I understand to be addressed by councillor Maynes. Councillor Maynes would like to address the question.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Oh.
To you councillor Maynes, the question is as put.
Right, sorry. Sorry, I was in a bit of a fluster there. Right, sorry, sorry. So yes, councillor Stone. Well, the deputy prime minister has been very clear in that she wants to see housing growth across the country. Now, Newcastle City Council have been involved in discussions. The leader of the council attended a very successful roundtable event with the deputy prime minister quite recently. Housing targets are set based upon a national formula that looks at funding previous delivery supply in needs. Here in Newcastle, we have a strong history of continuing to build. And in the decade to the end of 2023, the council completed just over a thousand new affordable homes. And in addition, directly facilitated by means of land and or grant funding, the delivery of another thousand affordable homes by partner organizations. We have a plan and a minimum expectation to deliver at least 150 new affordable homes annually through affordable rent or low cost home ownership. The council, following the roundtable event with the deputy leader of the Labour Party, submitted a formal response identifying some of the challenges and potential resolutions to provide more new homes in the city. The areas highlighted included easier access and more flexible funding to meet local needs, a fairer approach to the HRA modeling and investment support in existing stock. And of course, we will be setting out further details as to our overall housing strategy to cabinet in the early part of the next financial year. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Maynes, supplemental councillor Stone.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you to councillor Maynes for the answer given. I don't know the extent to which the cabinet member is familiar with the so-called mutant algorithm on housing numbers and housing allocations. But I wonder if I could invite her to comment on whether she agrees with the deputy prime minister's apparent decision to reduce Newcastle's target numbers for the future at the same time that other North East authorities are seeing some very substantial increases. And perhaps you could take a view on what kind of message that sends in terms of growing the city's economy and housing supply compared to other areas in the North East combined authority. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Maynes.
Well, to be honest, I think we will continue to build houses as we see fit in Newcastle. I mean, I don't think we're actually ever going to go over and above the requirement because obviously there is a lot of money and investment that's required. I know Angela Rina is looking at, as you say, a decrease. But whether that works out in that, those sorts of ways, I don't know for the future. But it's definitely not our intention to intentionally do less. If you see what I mean. Thank you.
I haven't received any requests for further supplemental, but councillor Ferguson, if you'd like to go to the microphone. Two supplemental, so there's one of the supplemental if anyone indicates. Councillor Bell.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Whilst the target is a decrease, it nevertheless is a target for increasing the number of homes in the city. Much has been made of the potential for brownfield land and brownfield housing fund to meet the target for increasing the number of homes in the city. Do you believe that the sufficiency of brownfield land is adequate to meet the target even at a reduced level? And if not, do you have a sense of where we need to go next in terms of where to deliver the housing targets that we have been set?
Well, it's a very interesting question because obviously we do have plans to build. Now, sometimes when we build houses, they could be quite small. So it could be six houses on a very specific piece of land that needs reusing and things like that. When you talk about brownfields, I think people expect something that's mega, a bit like the rise. But obviously we do have plans coming forward. The rise does still continue to be developed. We also have fourth yard and we obviously have riverside renewal. And we'll be looking at other sort of sites as planning members will be aware over around the arena area on the other side of the station. So we do, I think we are very creative in the term brownfields. And like I say, we do have some quite small developments as well coming online, which are maybe six, five houses, but the six or five extra houses that are so desperately needed in the area. Thank you.
Councillor Maynes, councillor Bell.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the cabinet member for her report and also give the cabinet member and my colleague opportunity, if she can tonight, to put on record the good news for some of the residents about where the next houses may come. I know that we've heard a little bit about brownfield was the last question, but is there sites that we're able to let people know about who may have missed it through the planning portal? And there'll be new housing opportunities coming for individuals, for residents of the city and further afield. If the cabinet member hasn't got them details tonight, I'm sure that should be able to circulate the possible developments for the next 12 months.
Thank you, thank you, councillor Bell. I mean, we do have, like I said, a few sort of areas where there are quite small sections. For example, in areas in Walker, we have some sites for five and six houses. New Begin has just received, it's got a build of 43 houses. Now, they're going to be shared ownership, two and three bedroom houses. So you will pay a deposit, but you will also continue paying rent. And that will give more people the chance to actually get on the property ladder. We've got Pottery Bank, that's also going to be a shared mix of shared housing ownership, sorry, and social housing, just to name a few. But I can certainly circulate if people want more details on some of the very smaller projects. But like I say, smaller is often very beautiful, at least it's more houses. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Maynes. If you'd like to stay at the microphone, because when we get to item 10, I require you again. We've got three questions written for, marked for a written reply, which we received and the responses are included on the supplemental agenda that's been circulated and will be published on the council website. Before we move on to item 10, it was remiss of me not to mention that in the question in relation to the youth justice report or the youth justice board report, it was councillor Barnett's maiden speech. So I think we should acknowledge that the usual way. So councillor Maynes had a chance to draw breath. And we move on to item 10, which is your portfolio report in relation to Living City.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Yes, I'm very pleased to present my first annual report as portfolio lead for Living City. It's a wide range in portfolio with simply to ensure that we provide good quality, well managed housing in safe environments and that housing development is delivered for our people. It's only by investing in the city's housing stock and providing access to decent homes for everyone who needs it, that we, for everyone who needs it, that we will deliver on our priorities to tackle poverty, create an inclusive economy and reach our net zero emissions. We have five key housing priorities, which is to develop and implement a housing strategy and a delivery plan for the city. Secondly, to transform repairs in our construction services. Thirdly, to ensure mandatory and selective licensing schemes provide safe, good and quality, well managed homes in our private rented sector. And also, fourthly, to complete the 2020 to 25 review of homelessness and rough sleeping strategy to develop a new 2025 to 2030 strategy that delivers on our key objectives. I'm also very, very aware that since I brought this report to scrutiny before the summer holidays, that a great deal of things have happened in terms of a national government hitting the ground running. So I and officers are endeavoring to keep up with all the announcements and policies that are coming our way. I would also like to thank Vicky, the chief exec and all the directors team and all the office for helping pulling together this report and for your care and skill and dedication as we look together to provide and improve homes and communities across the city. I'll keep it very short.
Thank you, councillor Maynes. But everybody follows your example. We've got 25 minutes allocated to this item. I've just been reminded I have a huge list of people wanting to ask questions. So clearly it's an interesting report. So I'm going to go through them in batches of three, as I've done previously, and then we'll see how the time goes. So the first three that I've got is councillor Greenhoff, councillor Kane and councillor Hartley. If you'd like to sort of make yourselves available at the microphone. So councillor Greenhoff first.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you to the cabinet member for her report. I really welcome the commitment to the getting to know you visits and the engagement that will be taking place across communities, in particular in West End and West Oak. That connection and the visibility is so important for spotting issues and especially for where there might be early intervention that's needed in communities. Could the cabinet member set out what her intentions are in relation to these sessions? And what she expects the council will be able to do and learn from and act on following the visits across the city? Thank you.
Councillor Greenhoff, councillor Kane.
Yes, thank you, Lord Mayor. And thank you for the report, although I was concerned that there was little or no mention of damp and mould. I think like many here, we have lots of residents, some suffering asthma, living in conditions which are very poor. In particular in our ward, the councillor Maynes will be familiar with Clarence and Stoddart House, but not limited to that. So now that the council has taken the management of the council housing back in house, can we make dealing with these damp and mould problems systematically a priority, please?
Councillor Hartley.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And connected to councillor Kane's question, councillor Maynes, it's good to read of the way in which the council is proactively supporting residents across all 10 years to insulate their homes and change to low carbon heating and hot water systems. Given the 10% rise in the energy price cap and the cut of the winter fuel allowance for many over 65s, I'm wondering if you have a target in mind when it comes to rolling out insulation schemes to keep homes warm? And if you have detail on how you might achieve that?
Councillor Maynes, if you'd like to address the first three questions, thanks.
Thank you, it's quite difficult. Okay. Yes, the getting to know you visits, they're an excellent initiative that is currently being piloted at the moment in the flats. I'm trying to think where the flats are. And it will come to me anyway. So yes, we, so we've got, the visits are ongoing currently at the moment. They're two weeks into a pilot, we decided to do a four week pilot just so that we can check that, you know, we've got questions right, that tenants understand what the engagement is about. And it's proven to be extremely positive with people who are. A friend of mine bumped into somebody who was getting a visit and they were actually quite delighted that somebody was coming out to their house and was looking to come and see what has been done and then to just listen to what they wanted out of their council house. One of the other things that we're also going to do around it is we're putting in training for those staff after the pilot to do a kind of, once across the threshold, they will do an assessment of that tenant as well. So we'll hopefully within that as well, be able to pick up vulnerabilities, safeguarding issues and safety issues. Because quite often, and I'm sure lots of councillors in the room will have had this, is that it's not until their relatives get in touch. Because a lot of elderly people, for example, will sit at home and say, I'm fine, I'm fine, I'm fine. And then it'll be the family who then discovers that they're not coping. So we want a kind of scheme where whoever it is who goes across that threshold, whether it's a housing officer, someone to check about children or anything like that, basically will report back to services so that we have quite a comprehensive service around that. So I think the getting to know you visits are, once we've evaluated it, we will then be coming out to everybody. And if you've got tenants and we're doing some work in that area, we will let you know. And if you'd like to join in on the getting to know you visits, you will be more than welcome. Councillor Kane, in terms of damp and mould, you'll be aware that we've just, new legislation has just came out around Renters Rights Bill and things like that. And within that, there is a specific AWABs law, which is around legal expectations and frameworks for landlords to address property issues. And within that, damp and mould is obviously a very key area. Since taking over the repairs and maintenance service, we have made this a priority. And we have specifically have teams set up to deal with damp and mould. And I think the target, and I'm sure Christine will correct me if I'm wrong, and I can email it back out to you tomorrow, is to look at about 50 a week and then we will deal with those situations. So we are prioritizing them. In terms of the insulating your home and in terms of a rollout and the target around insulation, I will have to get back to you on that one, councillor Hartley, because I actually don't have that information currently. But I will send that information out to you so that you can see what progress we are making around that area.
Okay, councillor Maynes, I can give you a little break now while we take the next three questions. Councillor Hay, councillor Cookson and councillor Ali. So councillor Hay first of all.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you to councillor Maynes for her report. Councillor Maynes, what impact will the Renters Rights Bill have on residents in Newcastle? Thank you.
Councillor Cookson.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I really appreciate the officers bringing this report to council and the whole team pulled it together during what's been a particularly challenging time as YHC has been subsumed back into the council. You've already mentioned, and colleagues have mentioned, around insulating properties. The council has previously committed to refurbishing 50 empty homes per month. And to councillor Hartley's comment about the decarbonisation, we have a fully funded social housing decarbonisation scheme going on in Heaton at the moment on Heaton Park Court, which is making great progress on site. However, I'm concerned that we're tackling the quick wins and not addressing the more complex housing typologies. Can the cabinet member provide an update on the other part of that program which was funded back in April 23 to address insulation works on the terrace properties in Heaton? I think we're potentially missing a trick here in that if we're going to refurbish 50 homes a month, should we not be decarbonising them at the same time?
Councillor Ali.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Councillor Maynes, you may not be able to answer this question today, so please don't hesitate to email me. But considering today the Grenfell report has been published, how has Newcastle City Council responded regarding fire safety and high rises? Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Maynes.
Thank you. Yes, so like I said before about never changing situation, the Renters Rights Bill has came into force, which has, will have a great impact on renters across the city and also across us as being a provider of housing. And one of the big ones is the abolition of section 21, which will be removing the threat of arbitrary evictions and increase in tenant security and stability. Um, there's also enhanced, enhanced tenants' rights. So tenants will be able to actually challenge rent increases if they feel that they're being used to force them out of the back door. There is also within that, as I've mentioned, A W O Ps law, which is around legal expectations and timeframes for landlords to address property issues. Um, decent home standards, which will be about quality of living, um, situation and tackling the blight of poor quality houses. And also, um, quite arbitrary, also there is a thing there about pets and being allowed to have a pet when you're renting a property. And so there is quite a lot of detail on that. Um, and if members are interested, I can certainly send out, um, a summary of it because, um, it will impact greatly on what your tenants and renters are, um, able to do. So if people would like a copy of that, then please do let me know and I'll send it. Um, in terms of, uh, the Heaton Park, um, flats is an exa- is an excellent example of what we can do in terms of renovation as well as bringing things up to standards in terms of eco. Shieldfield flats, the big three flats, uh, Paddington Court, et cetera, will be the next three that are targeted within that. Specifically around the Heaton, um, uh, update around the Heaton terraces, I will have to get back to you on that detail because it's obviously something from a previous year, but I will get back to you and speak, uh, and, and provide the detail on that. But the next three terr- uh, three blocks of flats that are going to be, um, brought to the same standard as Heaton Park Court are the three Shieldfield, um, blocks. In terms of, um, Grenfell, yeah. Obviously, I'd like to put on record, it's been an extremely tragic and very hard day to day. Um, in terms of listening to the details of the report that came out. Um, the Grenfell inquiry is, is basically showing that the deaths were avoidable, there was systematic failure, terrible dishonesty and greed, and basically an institutional indifference to how it happened. And thankfully now there will be a criminal investigation. When Grenfell happened, uh, obviously the council, at the time, had 42 blocks of flats in this high risk, uh, sort of category. Um, in 2023, um, we actually did a two-year plan of building safety reviews across the whole city. Um, so that basically we could look at, um, safety features and fire safety features with it across the city. In the aftermath of Grenfell, we invested around 30 million, and that was on things like fire door repairs and replacements. We also did a pi- we are still doing, sorry, a pilot project utilizing thermal imaging cameras. And also, very importantly, a resident education project to raise awareness of fire safety protocols and evacuation. We also stepped up our programme to test or render an insulation used on the blocks and, um, and dealt with that. And obviously, now that the Grenfell report is out, I'm sure there will be further legislation and issues that we will have to look at. And we will, as the landlord of the city, review our engagement mechanisms again and consider the findings of the Grenfell report.
Councillor Mayne, um, we still have some time in hand, so, um, thanks for your stamina. Uh, the next three that I'll call on and then we'll see how time goes is councillor Allen, councillor Barry Stanners and councillor Stone. So councillor Allen first.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Does the cabinet member share the concerns of myself and councillor Kemp about the very poor condition of the flat roofs on some council properties in Links Green in Parklands Ward? Councillor Kemp told me that he was horrified to learn of the conditions that some tenants have been enduring. And he asked officers for an urgent resolution to the problems that have led to some of these homes having water running down internal walls, mouldy walls and ceilings, and in some cases, rain dripping onto beds as tenants slept. Even though a survey by drone has shown the extent of the problem, showing damaged roofs and very poor insulation, staff aren't responding to my emails about when these roofs are going to be of good quality once again. Does the cabinet member think that this is acceptable?
Councillor Barry Stanners?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you for bringing this, uh, report to, uh, council, uh, this evening. Um, earlier this year, the previous government launched a consultation. And that consultation was on proposed changes to the allocation of social housing. Um, I was just wondering if you could, um, update council on, um, what council's position is on that and give a little bit more detail. Thank you.
Councillor Stone?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Um, my question is, my, I understand the council is currently putting in place a comms plan or a comms drive around the takeback of your homes in Newcastle um, and for, uh, for housing tenants with a particular emphasis on tackling voids, improving repairs and maintenance and tackling damp and mould. I'm interested to ask what the envisaged timeframe is for completing priority work programmes in these areas? Uh, and whether the comms plan will include telling tenants about when the target date is for completing these programmes? Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Stone, councillor Mayne?
Uh, yes, um, councillor Allen, um, obviously that's casework that you've taken up with officers and no, it's not good that you haven't had a response to it. So I will make sure that you do get a response to those questions because I obviously can't comment about something that I'm unaware of, so I will ask officers to get back to you on that. Um, in terms of, um, councillor Stephen, uh, Barry Stanners, um, the council, um, the questions, the, the government put forward a consultation about looking at things around, um, who should access council homes, social housing. And basically, they wanted to do a series of tests around it. Um, the government have stated that it does not intend to enact the, uh, policy proposal set out from the previous government. Stakeholders and members of the public who were consulted were clear that they just did not support, um, such tests. They, they couldn't see the relevance of it. Uh, and the bottom line is, the only real answer to addressing the unmet need for social housing is to increase the supply. Um, the government says that it's committed to building 15 million high quality, well designed and sustainable homes. And Newcastle City Council will play its part in delivering those targets. Um, in terms of, um, the voids and, uh, the timeframe around damp and mould, um, as you're aware, that we will be going, that we are going out to do, um, a sort of test around our housing, um, uh, our housing stock. And when we do the stock audit, we will have a much better idea of what of the issues that we are dealing with, because we won't know them all, because we obviously haven't been through the door and seen them all. I know that's a big ask and it's a big ask that officers are very much committed to. Um, but the voids that we are aware of, the damp and mould that we are aware of, our teams are also aware of them. And, uh, they have put out a, a plan around completing 50 voids a month. There are targets around damp and mould and there are targets around other issues such as fencing, joinery and things like that. Um, so I don't have an exact timeframe when all of this will, um, be done. Because like I say, we don't know the full extent of some of the issues within some of our social housing. But obviously, we will keep people updated on it and, um, I don't know when I'm next back at scrutiny, but I can certainly look at bringing more of those figures back as well for that time.
Okay. Thank you, councillor Mayne. Um, we are approaching, I think we've got about three or four minutes left. I'm going to take two more questions and see how it goes. Councillor Chisholm and councillor Hoodart, if you can ask your questions and then we are getting very close to the, um, time limit on this item. But councillor Chisholm? Councillor Chisholm? No?
No.
No question? No. In that case, I will ask councillor Walker. Am I right in thinking that councillor Chisholm doesn't, doesn't want a question? Okay. So it's ca- so it's councillor Hoodart and councillor Walker?
Uh, Lord Mayor, just quickly, um, councillor Kane asked the question that I was going to ask about damp and mould and
Oh, that's, well, I'll just take the
Councillor Mayne's answered about A W O Ps law, so I'll withdraw my question.
I could, in that case, I could accommodate somebody else. Um, so, um,
You did say I only had two to three minutes, so I'll answer, I'll answer Durians.
Oh, thank you, Lord Mayor. I did have a question about Grenfell, but I think that's probably been answered so far. Yes. I'm, I have two things. Um, the stock condition survey is ongoing at the moment. And I'm wondering if that is showing a lot of properties that are really not fit for purpose and should be demolished, if you will consider this? Right, that's the first one. The second one is, in your report, you make mention of the policy of not evicting into homelessness. Understand that, that's fine. What I want to ask you is, if you will relook at this in light of the constant antisocial behaviour that we have on some of our housing estates, we have individuals and groups and families who indulge in anti anti, antisocial behaviours. There's noise, day and night, doors slamming, people coming and going, et cetera. We know these people are often troubled, but they cause trouble for their neighbours. And they are constantly told, well, we can't evict them. Well, what I'd like you to ask about or to consider is not so much eviction, but a programme of transfer, if you can move these people somewhere else to another estate, somewhere.
Is this, is this a question or is this advice given to the government?
If you will consider, consider doing this, to move these people who are a blight on some of our council estates and they do annoy ordinary residents.
If I can move on here, councillor Mayne, I'd answer.
Right, um, who are law abiding and keep their properties decent. Thank you.
Councillor Mayne, I think that was a two-part question.
That's fine. Um, I mean, as we've said, the stock condition survey, uh, will take a long time to get through. And within that time, we will be looking at all properties and the state of them and also when they were built and what materials were built, et cetera. And if required, and if they aren't coming up to any sort of standards and are past, if you like, redemption, then I'm sure demolition would be something that we would look at. Um, in terms of, um, a policy of no, um, evictions, I mean, it, it it's no eviction into homelessness is what we say, so we will not make people deliberately homeless. Now, in terms of antisocial behaviour, you will know, um, my previous brief was around community safety. Antisocial behaviour is an absolute dreadful blight. It ruins people's lives. Now, if those people, um, within that, um, reported to obviously housing officers, if that behaviour is illegal, um, for example, um, use of drugs or, um, wrecking the property and things like that, those are the breaches that we could look into, but they would also become a police matter. So we do, um, look at, um, yes, antisocial behaviour, but we also look at it through what I call our style panel, where we try to work with people and try to look at how, you know, their behaviour and all the rest of it. Um, but if the behaviour is criminal, then you must please report it to the police as well as to the housing officers because it's the police that can provide the information for us to work with tenants in terms of any sort of moving them over and out of their areas.
Thank you very much, councillor Mayne.
Thank you.
An excellent effort. I'm conscious that a few of the people wanted questions, but I'm afraid that, as I say, time is against us again, so I'm going to have to terminate there, but I'm sure that if you
Please, please send the questions to me.
Send an email to councillor Mayne, she'd be delighted to, to answer your queries. Um, if we move on to item 11, which is the appointments as set out in the council papers, do we agree to those appointments? Go to the microphone.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd, I'd noticed that, that has been a resignation of a Labour member from the Climate Change Committee. Council will have noticed that we now have two Green Party councillors elected in this chamber. And I was wondering if there was an opportunity to allow myself or councillor Mosharaf to take one of those positions on, on the Climate Change Committee?
Sure, that's a point of order. I think it's more
Chair, chair, over to my lead, I'm like. Chair, the seats on the committee will be politically allocated and, I, I mean, it would be a matter for the group to which the seats have been allocated, whether they want to, to fill those seats or whether they'd be prepared to, um, pass them to another group.
My understanding is there are four Labour members on that committee, four Lib Dems and there's four vacancies. I'm, I'm just putting that out there. I'm, I'm not sure if this is the right place to ask the question, but I felt this is one way of doing that.
I, I think it's probably a question you need to take, um, with the, the group outside of this meeting.
I think it's useful that you brought it to our attention. I'm not sure it's a point of order, but, uh, sometimes, you know, we just like to make our voice heard, don't we, so?
Great. Well, if you can find a way to raise that outside of this meeting, that would be, that'd be great. Thank you. Thank you very much.
So otherwise, apart from that, do we agree the appointments are set out? Yes, agreed, okay. Uh, item 12 on the agenda is notice of motion. We've finally got on to the motions. Uh, this is about the 30th anniversary of, um, fair trade, so I will call on councillor Barry Stanners to move the motion to be seconded by councillor Cairns.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. As the council's representative to the Newcastle Fair Trade Partnership, I'm really pleased to be able to move this motion this evening. Newcastle has a long and very proud record of supporting the fair trade movement. In 2003, Newcastle City Council became the first metropolitan authority to receive fair trade status. Uh, we're the birthplace of the tradecraft movement, who were the pioneers at the start of the fair trade movement. They introduced the first fair trade tea, coffee and sugar to the UK. And Newcastle is the home of shared interest and ethical fair trade lender. This year, 2024 marks 30 years since the launch of the Fair Trade Mark. And in that time, the Fair Trade Foundation has worked really hard with over 2 million farmers and workers. They've supported more than 10,000 fair trade certified communities, organisations and groups, including Newcastle. Producers of fair trade products have shared over 1.7 billion pounds in the fair trade premium. This payment is additional money on top of the minimum price cap. And the Fair Trade Mark has become the world's most recognised and most trusted ethical label with 92% awareness among consumers when polled. These achievements are fantastic and are great news, but there's always more that can be done. Especially with the ever growing threat of climate change, which is impacting fair trade crops. My colleague councillor Cairns is going to say a little bit more about that shortly, so I won't say any more on that. As a consumer, choosing a product with the Fair Trade Mark is the best way to support farmers and workers in the developing world. And with almost 5,000 fair trade certified products on UK shelves alone, it's never been so easy to choose fair trade. This motion that I'm bringing this evening reaffirms Newcastle City Council's commitment to supporting the Newcastle Fair Trade Partnership, which it has done since becoming a founding member back in 2003. Fair Trade Fortnight will run from the 9th of September to the 24th of September. And the Newcastle Fair Trade Partnership will be running and supporting several events throughout the city during Fair Trade Fortnight. I would encourage all councillors and all in the city to take part in whatever way they can. Lord Mayor, I hope this motion will receive cross-party support and I formally move. Thank you.
Thank you, my mate, councillor Barry Stanners. I noticed that you were struggling with the lighting again there, so it's something that hopefully we can address by the next meeting. But councillor Cairns, if you'd like to say.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Um, our commitment to fair trade city status is indicative of our commitment to see fair trade as embedded in our local economy and in our communities. We must also not forget the purpose of fair trade, to support those at the front line of climate change. Fair trade is also about climate justice. Small scale farmers who did the least to cause the climate crisis suffer the worst effects as lives and livelihoods are lost due to extreme weather events. According to Oxfam's According to Oxfam's Climate Inequality Report 2023, the highest-earning 1% are responsible for the same level of emissions as the lowest-earning 5 billion people on the planet. Many small-scale farmers and workers in countries most affected by climate change are often experts due to experience in adapting to climate change. However, unfair trade means they don't have the money to invest in sustainable farming techniques to secure a fairer, greener future. Fair trade is working to grow fair pay for farmers, to provide them with the resources and financial stability to protect the environment and adapt to the risks of climate change. James Garcia Flores is a coffee farmer from Colombia, a member of Red Ecol Sierra Cooperative. He works on his farm in northern Colombia, worries about the future of coffee as the effects of climate change continue to impact. We are in danger because of climate change, it is here now. The temperature is too high, so we have to replace coffee with cocoa. We have to plant trees between our remaining coffee bushes to give them shade. We are the first generation to feel the change and the last generation to be able to change it. With support from fair trade, farmers in James' cooperative are learning new ways to produce more sustainable, more ecologically friendly coffee. They practise dynamic agroforestry to provide shade and to boost soil quality. The cooperative has carried out a wastewater decannation project and has provided training to their members. In their community, the cooperative has funded education for members' children. Choosing fair trade means more money and power to producers, who are the front line of climate change, and signals a positive shift towards supporting climate justice. So I urge you to support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Cairns. I have two speakers indicated here, councillor Ashby and councillor Storey. If you want to make your way to the microphone, councillor Storey.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I asked a friend who's a campaigner celebrating 30 years of the fair trade mark to give me a Twitter-length description. She said, "Fair trade covers environmental, economic and social standards. It's the only scheme that currently sets minimum market prices for what farmers and producers are selling to cover the costs of sustainable production." And as Article 23(c) of the 1948 Universal Declaration of Human Rights says, "Everyone who works has the right to just and favourable remuneration, ensuring for himself and his family an existence worthy of human dignity and supplemented if necessary by other means of social protection." And of course, we now add herself to that 75-year-old declaration. She was keen for me to tell you that it is the local cooperatives themselves that make the decisions on how to spend the fair trade premium, not some suited men in a boardroom in London. The sorts of things the money is spent on are education, health, clean water and better methods of production. Beware of ethical washing, anything can say it's ethical, but only the fair trade mark is a sign of reassurance, she says. On behalf of all the opposition group of Liberal Democrats, I express our continued pride in being the first fair trade city and our support for fair trade and its motion, and congratulate the fair trade movement on 30 years as a valuable mark of verification.
Thank you very much, councillor Ashby. Thanks to our story.
Thank you very much. Speaking on behalf of the motion, and I'm going to be very, very brief, I'd really like to thank councillor Barry Stannis for bringing this really important motion. I'd also like to thank him for the excellent chocolate. And as somebody who eats a great deal of chocolate and have a morsel since having chemotherapy, when your taste buds are absolutely destroyed and you really crave sweet things, I can tell you that chocolate was exceptional. One of the things that I'd really like to highlight is the importance of women and women's inequality and the she deserves fair trade. It really recognises and highlights the hidden inequality that's experienced by women and girls behind the multi-billion global chocolate industry. And for that reason alone, and, you know, other speakers have been far more eloquent than me in describing other issues that are so important, but for that issue alone for me, it's really, really important that we focus on supporting fair trade, buying the products and just as a council really recognising the importance of that. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, councillor Storey. Councillor Barry Stannis, are there any final observations you'd like to make?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you to all the members who have taken part in this debate this evening. It's fantastic to hear that this motion will receive support from across the chamber. That is a really important message, which shows that, yes, we might be divided in certain things, but on this, we stand united and support the cocoa farmers and all other fair trade producers. I think some really important points were made. In particular, I'd quite like to highlight the point which was made about the fair trade premium price. Unlike other standards you might see in supermarkets where they put their own little label on, yes, they might guarantee a minimum price for the cocoa or other product which they supply, but they don't offer that additional funding, and that additional funding is what really changes lives. It was pointed out by another speaker that that money is used by the communities and they decide what to use it on, and it links nicely into the second point about women and girls, because that money has been a godsend to, you know, those communities and putting young girls into education. Thank you very much, everyone, for all the comments who took part, and I hope everyone can vote for this motion. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Barry Stannis. I don't have any further speakers, so does councillor agree to that motion?
Agreed.
Okay, we'll move on to item 13. Suspension of illegality, okay, is that agreed?
No.
In that case, we'll go to a vote. Is there a seconder for that? Lots of seconders, seconders and thirders. So we'll need to go to the vote on that, so if you'd like to do your go vote and hand waving or whatever else you do. Would you like to raise your hands if you can't go vote and announce how you wish to vote? We've got two at the back on this side, councillor Shatwell and councillor Cairns. No, that's two noes over there. Anything else on this side? Anybody else on this side? No, in that case, move across it. Councillor Hoddard?
Yes.
Councillor Hoddard, yeah, okay. Going across here, councillor Morrissey. You're a yes, okay. Councillor Donnelly?
Yes.
You're a yes. Oh, yes?
Yes.
Yes, a yes here as well. Anybody else on this side? Got all the votes on this side? Anything else on this side? Getting prompted by my share of... Have we got them all? Okay, let's have the figures together then. Okay. So I've got 25 yes and 35 no, so in fact, it's not agreed to suspend standing orders. So if we move on to the next item on the agenda, which is notice of motion, item 13, which is pollution in the Uzeburn, and I call on councillor Coles to move this motion to be seconded by councillor Ashby. So if councillor Ashby wants to ready himself as well.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Well, I'm here tonight to talk about something that's pretty close to my heart, and I like to think pretty close to everyone's heart, the state of the Uzeburn and what we can and should do to protect it. Now, the Uzeburn isn't just any old river, it's a fairly vital part of our city, from its source near the airport, it flows through Castle and Parkland Wards, Jesmond Dean, Armstrong Park, Heaton Park and down through the Uzeburn Valley, meeting the Tyne. It's a key feature of Newcastle, fully within our city boundaries, and for generations it's been a treasured natural asset. We've all enjoyed its beauty, benefited from its biodiversity and used it for recreation. Its banks are a place where people come to relax and to connect with nature. Sadly, today, the Uzeburn is in serious trouble. Like many rivers across England, it's facing a serious environmental crisis. It's suffering from severe pollution, much of it caused by untreated human waste and other pollutants being dumped into it. This isn't just a problem we can ignore, it's a clear failure of both corporate responsibility and environmental management. Northumbria Water, which should be safeguarding our water systems, has instead shown a shocking disregard for environmental standards, but they're not the only ones at fault. Urban Green Newcastle, the organisation responsible for managing many of our city's green spaces, including Jesmond Dean, has let us down. We believe that the discharge of untreated sewage into the Uzeburn is simply unacceptable. It's a breach of our trust and those responsible must be held to account, and we need to see immediate action to correct this. It's not just about holding polluters accountable, it's also about how we manage the areas around the Uzeburn. Jesmond Dean is one of our most beautiful parks, but the way it's been managed by Urban Green has been seriously lacking. One of the key issues here is the inadequate signage along the riverbank. Now, this might seem like a fairly small thing in the face of bigger environmental challenges, but it's actually really important. Signage is desperately needed to fly off the dangers posed by pollution in the Uzeburn. People need to know about this, and without proper signage, visitors are left without the guidance they need, and that increases the risk to themselves and to those around them. I'm asking the council to ensure that Urban Green takes immediate steps to improve the signage in Jesmond Dean. This isn't just about convenience, it's about protecting our citizens. It can also provide vital information about the Uzeburn itself, raising awareness of the river's challenges and empowering residents to take action. Now, this is just one part of what needs to be a much bigger effort. The council must also ensure corrective action from Northumbria Water and urgently call on the new Labour Government to hold them accountable for the pollution they are causing. We need to see greater accountability locally and action from Urban Green as well. The only thing that I've seen so far is that Urban Green has resorted to desperate calls for donations to repair fencing along the river, let alone improving or putting in place signage. If they aren't capable of managing this relatively minor issue, we need to push them to it. These steps are essential, but they're not enough on their own. We need to engage and empower our local community by supporting a River Action Task Force to lead grassroots efforts to protect and restore the Uzeburn. We must advocate for stronger local rules to prevent this kind of environmental damage from happening again. And we must lead, and we need to lead by example in our own environmental management, showing that Newcastle is a city that values its natural assets and is willing to take the necessary steps to protect them. The council works hand in hand with Urban Green, Northumbria Water and the Environment Agency. Action can be taken by this group, and it would be a dereliction of duty not to. Over 1,200 people so far have signed a petition calling for action, and it's up to us to respond to every single one of those concerns. The Uzeburn has given a lot to this city, it's our turn to give back, to protect it, to restore it and to ensure that it can be enjoyed for generations to come. Improving signage in Jesmond Dean is a small but important part of this effort, and I urge the council to take action on this issue as part of our broader commitment to safeguarding Newcastle's natural heritage and protecting the environment. Thank you.
Councillor Ashby?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. In 2023, Northumbria Water paid its shareholders £396 for every hour it dumped sewage in the rivers, the fourth highest rate in England. This profit from pollution rate is based on Northumbria Water polluting for over 280,000 hours, and the shareholders received £110.8 million in dividends. While I echo every point made by councillor Coles and others complaining over the years in this council about the state of our rivers and their tributaries, especially the Uzeburn, I also want to focus on the bigger picture of greedy owners plundering our pockets to line their own while selling us water from sources they allow to be polluted. And when challenged, they claim to be unable to make the required investment, all because the profits have been siphoned off by financial engineering, excessive dividends and unwarranted bonuses for top management. Over the last five years, water firms in England have made £4.2 billion in pre-tax profits, and they've allowed sewage and pollutants to flow into our watercourses for almost a million hours while rewarding themselves richly for repeated environmental vandalism. The state of the Tyne and its tributaries is a testament to the environmental neglect that has become synonymous with the last government. It's high time the new one prioritises the health of our rivers and holds those in power accountable for their protection, as we are seeking to do both locally and nationally. The current regulator, Ofwat, is not fit for purpose. We've called for a new clean water authority to crack down on water companies and hold them accountable to end the sewage scandal once and for all. We want community groups on water company boards. We've been fighting the water companies from opposition in Parliament. Tim Farron MP, a Newcastle graduate and one of the record group of 72 Liberal Democrats in the Commons, put forward a private Members' Bill last November to establish a new model of company structure for Thames Water, a public benefit corporation. The owners have sucked so much money out in defiance of normal financial prudence that I can see little reason why they should be allowed to continue to profit at the public's expense. Ofwat, or successor body, should emulate the Financial Conduct Authority and the Prudential Regulation Authority, whose rules allow banks to claw back bonuses from employees, including senior managers, for up to 10 years. This can be implemented if an employee is involved in misconduct or risk management failure, or if they could have been aware of the issue but failed to take action. That would certainly concentrate the minds of millionaire CEOs and chairs and speed the cleanups of our filthy rivers. I second the motion.
Now, I understand you have an amendment removed by councillor Ali and seconded by councillor Chisholm.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. The Uzeburn is a key feature of our city, being wholly within its boundaries, from its source near the airport, through Castle and Parkland Wards, Jesmond Dean, Armstrong Park, Heaton Park and the Uzeburn Valley, all the way to the Tyne. My earlier reply to a question did mark out some of the issues regarding the Uzeburn. It is, like many rivers across England, with its challenges, many of them due to pollutants from storm overflows and other sources. Pollution of our rivers is a national issue, and all responsible should be held to account. The issue is a national and complex one and can't be resolved by a single agency or by identifying any one issue. Therefore, this amendment is rightly worded, "To achieve a pollution-free Uzeburn," the amendment captures these points, therefore I move it and ask you to vote the amendment. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Ali. Councillor Chisholm?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Just before I start, I'm gonna be cheeky. I would find these council meetings much more accessible if I was able to sit in my seat and use a microphone. It's quite hard to concentrate, struggle to see the notes and speak, so if that could be sorted out. I know it's not your job, and I'm not asking you to tell me whether you will or not, but it would help. Thank you. So I'm pleased to... Sorry, I've got iPad problems. Very pleased to second this amendment, which I think is offering a viable and constructive addition to the resolution to focus on solutions to the really serious problem of pollution in Uzeburn, actually, I revert. I think this is the third time I've spoken about it in this council meeting, and if anyone's interested, I think we can give notice in this meeting that the problem isn't going away and we're not going to stop talking about it, and I think that is very important. But what I want to acknowledge really with this amendment is that the solution to this problem does not reside in Newcastle. problem does not reside in Newcastle. It's definitely our responsibility, if we want to talk locally and act locally, as well as bring about national change, there is no solution within Newcastle to this problem. We know about the systemic crisis of pollution in the river system across the country, and so this amendment is just adding that in to make sure that we're really clear about where the problem lies and what the solutions are. And I heard all of the quite party political lines when the motion was moved, and so I've got one for you, I think, because what isn't mentioned is that part of the problem with our river crisis is the massive cuts that were imposed on the Environment Agency and the undermining of the regulatory framework for our river systems. It's got much worse in recent years. The government has less information and it's lost its regulatory structure. So, if we're going to make broad political points about the problem, a large part of the decline in the crisis isn't only about privatisation, although it is, it's also about austerity in the coalition, and I don't think the proposers of this motion should forget that. I want to make another point, which is about being very careful about how we talk about pollution environmental challenges in a way that makes solutions accessible to people. So, it is true that there is bad pollution in the Euzburn River. It's also true that it's not, it's not an even issue. So, it's basically when, when there's a lot of excess runoff and water in the system because of bad weather, then the sewage gets pumped into the river. Residents don't really know about that, so that when the river looks like it's fast-moving, it's had its filthiest, and that's a problem that doesn't just come from pollution, it also comes from agricultural runoff. And I think we need to remember that, and I think that's missing in the motion, and the amendment kind of helps taking a broader approach to looking at, seriously looking at this massive infrastructure systemic problem about, about the water system in this country. I mean, I mean, just another, I'm running out of time apparently. I also want to wonder about the timing of this motion. As I said, this is the third time I think I've talked about this issue in the council, and I know that there is work going on it all the time. And really, I hear this motion, this inflammatory motion has been port really to this motion to help with Rand standing in the North Jesmond by-election. I think that's a bit of an abusive process. It's an abusive process, and we should be solving problems, not just trying to work on petty electoral advantage. Okay. Well, that isn't everything I wanted to say, but I'll stop because I've run out of time. Thank you. But please, Lord Mayor, if we could try and help make this a bit more accessible in the future, I'd probably finish my speeches. Thank you.
I'll certainly make a note of that, councillor Chisholm, along with better lighting of the Magdalen World, which is an initiative. Thank you. I've just been reminded that because the guillotine has now fallen, you can only call one extra speaker, which has presented me with a challenge. So, in the interest of neutrality, I'm going for councillor Hartley. The guillotine's fallen, so we can have one speaker, and then the person who moved the motion has a right to speak as well. I'm advised by, I'm advised by my legal adviser.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you to councillor Coles and councillor Ashby for bringing this motion before council. The health or otherwise of our blue spaces have quite rightly achieved more popular attention in the national press over the past two years, in no small part thanks to the failure of water companies. A cursory glance of private eye tells us all we need to know about how profits often come before people and planet. And as we heard earlier, the recent Supreme Court ruling that the Court of Appeal had been wrong in concluding that the legislation that privatised the water companies, prevented legal claims for nuisance, opens the doors for compensation claims for the discharges of untreated sewage into our rivers. Now, many of our communities, including my own in St Peter's Basin in Biker, has the privilege of looking out over the Tyne, a privilege that for me acts every day as a reminder of the powerful force of our rivers, the dangers of rising sea levels and the need to protect our rivers as the natural habitats they are for a range of species, from the otters to the leaping salmon to the seals. It's a reminder too that any action to clean up the Euzburn must not be achieved by sending the sewage direct to the Tyne instead. Perhaps picking up a conversation with the Euzburn Way League would be better, to think through rescuing the organic components of human sewage for renewable energy and/or turning it into clean, healthy, organic fertiliser. Wild Intrigue, a local community interest company, and the Euzburn Trust have been doing excellent work at tracking nature in the Euzburn Valley and supporting local initiatives to protect habitats as supported by the Joint Newcastle and North Tyneside Biodiversity Action Plan. But I think all of us in this room would agree we need to go much further. The Green Party is clear on our support for ending the mishandling of sewage by nationalising our water companies so we can put proper investment into the sewage and water infrastructure, knowing how the water is spent, how the money is spent, and targeting the worst affected areas. Only 14% of England's rivers meet the criteria for good ecological status, and the Euzburn is not one of them. Newcastle Green Party fully supports the measures outlined by our Lib Dem colleagues in this motion, and I hope council will vote for that original motion. Perhaps one day, with pressure from our four Green MPs, we can introduce a new Rights of Nature Act, giving rights to nature itself. I'd encourage you all to look at the example set by Green-led Lewis District Council, who acted to protect the Ouz, not Euzburn, from pollution by making it the first river in England to be granted legal rights. As we like to say in the Green Party, nature can't vote, but you can, we can, please do for the original motion. Thank you.
Councillor Coles, if you'd like any final observations? Thank you.
Just a couple of quick comments. Firstly, I'd like to remind the chamber that all I was repeating and echoing was something that was proposed by the Lib Dems at the general election. It had very little to do with what's going on in North Jesmond. The second thing is, and I appreciate the care that's been given to this, is therefore that I can expect your support for this relatively small step in the right direction. Thank you.
We now move to vote. Can I remind members that we're voting on the amendment first? So, we're voting on the amendment to this motion. Over to you. Any hands going up again? Councillor Cairns, councillor Shatwell? Yes, you are. A yes or a no vote?
Yes.
Yes and a yes, okay. Councillor Hoddart? No. Councillor Morrissey?
No.
No. Councillor Mitchell?
No.
No, okay. Anybody missed? Anything missed? No hands going up? Right, I've got the totals. The vote is 33 in favour of the amendment, 25 again, so the amendment is carried, and we're now voting on the original motion as amended. First, the original motion as amended is now the vote. Okay, is it agreed? Is it agreed that the original motion has amended? It doesn't need to go to a vote? No? Okay, good. We've now passed the guillotine at 30, so it means now it's decision time about whether we carry the further motions across to the next council meeting or vote on them this evening. So, can I first of all ask councillor Hoddart, motion seconded by councillor Morrissey, whether they want to vote on their motion this evening or carry it along over to the next council meeting? Sorry?
Carry it over.
Carry it over, okay. And then motion 15, the same with councillor Mark Donnelly?
Yes.
Carry it over as well? Okay. Motion 16, councillor Kane, councillor Cookson? Would you like to? Defer it to the next meeting? Okay. It's gonna be a long meeting, the next one. And motion 17, councillor Kemp, and seconded by councillor Ferguson. Do we want to determine that this evening or carry it over?
This evening.
This evening. So, does council agree this motion?
Agreed.
Excellent, well, we're there. So, just a reminder, thank you very much for your participation, thanks for your helping get through a very challenging agenda. The next meeting, of course, is on the 2nd of October, and can I just make the polite request that I always make, just to remain in your seats until the sheriff and I have left the council chamber?